I'd like to call our regular October meeting of the School Board to order, please. We'd have a roll call.
Mr. Acker, Dr. DeValle.
Here.
Mrs. Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Grably.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Dr. Stanbuck.
Here.
And Mr. Zayer.
Here. At this time, we need to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mrs. Flanagan, seconded by Dr. DeValle, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous with Mr. Acker absent. I'd like to welcome all our visitors here this evening. We have some special guests here tonight. Our, it is my honor to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance participant tonight. Mr. Richard Setliff is the current adjunct of the VFW Post in Martinsville, as well as past commander of the VFW Post in Bassett. Mr. Setliff served our country for seventeen years and nine months, and is a Vietnam veteran with service-connected disabilities. He is a lifelong member of the Disabled American Veterans and is standing member of the American Legion of Marsville. He was also the owner and operator of Melrose Saw and Tool for over twenty years. He remains active as an associate pastor of Fair Haven Fellowship. And finally, and most bravely, bravely, he has also served as grandpa for the past thirty-one years running for Teddy Martin. Mr. Setliff, welcome. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Martin to introduce our invocation participant.
Thank you very much. It's my honor to introduce Dr. Greg Hodges. Dr. Hodges currently serves as a senior pastor of Stanleytown's Amazing Grace Baptist Church, as well as the founder and executive director of Grace International Baptist Missions. Eight years ago, Greg facilitated the merger of two Baptist churches to form the largest independent Baptist church in Henry County. Additionally, Dr. Hodges serves as the vice president of Academic and Student Success Services, the chief academic officer at Patrick Henry Community College. He has served in several other positions at the college, where he actually began as a student nearly three decades ago. Greg began his career at PHCC as an adjunct, and later full-time professor in the field of early childhood education, earning recognition in 2006 as faculty member of the year. I'll note that that was the year I started in the program, so he might have gotten that award for dealing with me. Prior to joining Patrick Henry, Greg served as an elementary school teacher for Martinville City Schools. He holds degrees from the College of William &amp; Mary, Bethany Theological Seminary, the University of Phoenix, and Trident University, where he earned his PhD in Educational Leadership and Administration for Higher Education. As director of Patrick Henry's Southern Center for Active Learning Excellence, scale, Greg has traveled to more than seventy community colleges and trained thousands of faculty members throughout the country, facilitating workshops on cooperative learning, guided pathways, critical thinking, developmental education, and the National Student Success Agenda. He has additionally served on the board of directors for multiple organizations, including his current tenure with the Boys and Girls Club of the Blue Ridge and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes.
This time, Dr. Hodges, would you come to the podium and lead us in the invocation, please?
Sir, let's pray. My gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for the opportunity that you've provided us to educate the children of this community. Lord, we understand that we are never more like you than we were helping those who need our help. So, Lord, we thank you that you have called each of us to this life of education, a field of service that reaps benefits for generations to come. Well, I'm a proud product of this school system, and I see firsthand the handiwork that happens when teachers invest themselves into the lives of our students. Thank you for each School Board member, Lord, for what they represent, what they stand for, and the impact they're having upon the lives. Thank you for the staff, the employees. Thank you, Lord, for Mrs. Strayer and her staff and the dedication. We ask your blessings upon the meetings today, and all that you do, we'll thank you for it. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Present on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Setliff and Dr. Hodges. Thank you. At this time, we have public comment. We have the president of the HCA, Mrs. Carter.
Thank you. I'm Dorothy Carter of the Reed Creek District, and I am the president of the HCEA. I want to tell you, the purpose of HCEA is to promote professionalism. We're a united group of over two hundred that represents members who are administrators, teachers, peer professionals, clerical staff, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and other classified staff. One of the ways that we represent these people is to have open dialogue with our superintendent and you, the members of the School Board, about issues as they present themselves, so that we can find solutions upon which everyone can agree. HCEA is glad that Sandy Strayer is our superintendent. We're glad because Henry County Public Schools has some problems that this administration has inherited from previous administrations. And while her administration did not create these problems, we know that she can help solve them. Tonight, we present you with issues about employee payroll. Many employees are behind in their respective scales. Some groups do not have a salary scale in last year's budget book, and some employees work under different titles at similar positions without similar pay. These are issues that did not occur under Mrs. Strayer's administration, but they are issues which we know she can solve because she cares about her employees. In fact, her personal agenda is one that promises to treat all employees equitably. We know under her direction, in conjunction with David Scott, Assistant Superintendent, Ben Boone, Henry County Public School Director of Finance, and Christine Landon, Human Resources Director, that the issues of salaries that are steps behind for all employees can be resolved fully and correctly by the 2020-2021 school year. In addition, some groups have seen raises, but they've not moved forward on their scales. And then, for those who are on scales, such as principals and some others, they don't always know how they might move ahead because there's no written criteria to explain how that might occur. They need to know that criteria. HCEA was told that teachers were two steps behind, and that, but that's not necessarily true. Some teachers are two steps behind, but some from about step fifteen down are three steps behind. HCEA was told that peer professionals are six steps behind, but that's not true either. What we've learned is that since the 1990s, many of the classified staff are not on a step scale that equates to years of service. Instead, sometimes they receive a percentage raise, sometimes they receive a step raise, and sometimes they receive both. Because of the way the salary scale is written to resemble the teacher's scale, peer professionals feel as if they're not being treated fairly. So, some decisions have to be made to help this vital group of our workforce to feel valued, respected, and treated with equity. For certain, peer professionals are among the lowest paid of Henry County Public School employees. And some, especially if they're single, qualify for food stamps, depending on family size. Cafeteria workers are paid by the hour, and they do have a salary scale, yet most are kept to part-time hours, and they do not earn a living wage. Bus drivers and bus A's are two groups of employees who appear to be paid fairly, even while their wages are meager compared to the huge responsibility they face every day. HCEA is thankful that this group appears to be treated well in respect to their salaries, but we are concerned about them for the rigors they face every day, and we're concerned for every other group. So, we ask again that salary scales be addressed correctly next school year, the 2020-2021 school year. And for groups that are not on a yearly step scale, we ask that they receive raises that compensate them for the rising cost of living. Henry County Public Schools needs to be a beacon of integrity in every way in this community. We need to treat every employee group well in salaries and benefits. And honoring workers in their paychecks is what promotes professionalism.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Next, we have awards and recognitions, and Mrs. Hatchett is in charge of this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you know, it is our tradition to recognize VSPA and proclamations from the governor, and this month, we have two of those. October has been declared VSPA Bullying Prevention Month, as is the tradition in the state of Virginia. In an effort to promote awareness of school bullying, the VSPA Board of Directors has designated the month of October as Bullying Prevention Month, and the state government supports that with a resolution, which I'd like to share with you and to make you aware that in our schools throughout the course of the month, we will be hosting a wide variety of activities at each level and sharing information about bullying prevention with our families and our students and our community members. The proclamation that came from the governor's office reads, "Whereas, school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia; and whereas, over twenty percent of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim; and whereas, bullying can assume many forms, including verbal, physical, and in cyberspace, and can happen on and off school grounds; and whereas, it is important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community; and whereas, the Virginia School Boards Association has developed a model policy on anti-bullying to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors, now therefore, I, Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize October 2019 as Virginia School Boards Association Bullying Prevention Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call the observance to the attention of all of our citizens." And again, we will be sharing information throughout the course of the month with all of our schools and with our families. Second on our list this evening is the designation of October as Disability History and Awareness Month. And October 2019 is a little different than in the years past. In 2009, youth with disabilities initiated a campaign to have the General Assembly pass a resolution designating October as Disability History and Awareness Month, and that did occur. Typically, the governor's office produces a proclamation as a blanket proclamation for the entire month for disability history and awareness. This year, the governor has issued two separate proclamations to recognize specific disability weeks and disability awareness target areas. We, as a school division, will continue with our tradition of honoring the disabled in a variety of ways throughout our schools, raising awareness of various disabilities throughout our schools. And in November, Ms. Rup will come with a presentation of all of the things that occurred throughout the course of October, so that we have a good scope of the things that were shared in our schools. The Inclusion Project is the project championed by the State Department of Education this year. So, in addition to those activities in our school that we are supporting through the state, the governor has also issued a proclamation for Disability Employment Awareness Month, so we will be talking with our students about that, and with Invisible Disabilities Week, which is the week of October thirteenth. So, we will be especially talking with our students about disabilities that you may not be able to see, and we think that that's important as well. So, we bring those to your attention this evening. But the best part of our agenda is when we get to recognize our students and our staff. And we are doing that this evening, and I actually have an extra one that did not appear on the agenda this evening by mistake. So, I want to start with that one. We, as a school division, support the fundraising campaign of the United Way each year. United Way supports health and wellness in our community, financial stability for our families and our employees, and they support education. We, as a group, participated in the United Way Day of Action this year, which is the way they always kick off their campaign. And several of our schools participate in fundraising activities to raise funds to support the educational support efforts of the United Way. Specifically, we tend to really support the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which provides students a book a month from the time they're born until they're five years old. And essentially, the support for that program that a United Way donor gives provides the postage. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library provides hard copy books for students, and they are super excited to receive those when they get them. But I'd like to ask the representatives from our schools who increased their giving last year and earned recognition from the United Way to come and be recognized tonight. And we have representatives tonight from Bassett High School, Rich Akers Elementary, Axton Elementary, and Stanleytown Elementary. And they will kick off their campaigns again in just a couple weeks, so. Our second recognition this evening, listed as third on your list, is a very important student. Last spring, a very generous donor, who is from our community, approached us about supporting a student's summer experience at the American Shakespeare Center in Stanton. So, Kennedy Coleman of Magnavista applied and won the scholarship for Henry County students, and she represented our community at the Shakespeare Theatre Company this summer. So, we invited her to come this evening, and obviously, we want to recognize her, but I knew that you would want to hear a little bit about her experience. And afterward, I'm going to ask her, she has a gift to present to the scholarship sponsors who are able to join us this evening, Rodney and Terry Young. So, I'm going to ask Kennedy to come up, tell you a little bit about her experience, and then we're going to work together for our photo session.
Hello, my name is Kennedy Coleman, and I would first like to thank the Young Family fundraising, fundraiser, okay, for giving me this opportunity to go to the American Shakespeare Center in Stanton. This experience has helped me become a more confident actor and has helped me become a more outgoing person. I met so many amazing people and so many amazing friends, talented actors and actresses throughout this three-week experience that I still keep in touch with today. And a lot of the exercises and skills that I gained from this camp, I'm able to use today and in my drama class and in other productions after school and at the middle school even. I have talked to many people about my experience at the camp, and they have all been interested in learning more about it or going. And I would hopefully, I, sorry, I would hopefully like to go again this summer.
Well, Kennedy, I know that we talked about, the board members may have some questions for you. And so, you and I were talking before the meeting, and is your career goal to become an actress?
No, ma'am.
No, but, we've already talked about this. But, you know, the school system offers electives that they don't have to offer. And we talked about auto body, we talked about career and technical classes, we talked about foreign languages, fine art classes, such as theater, drama classes. And why do you think those are important, or why is it important to you?
Well, for me specifically, I know that I am very introverted, and I don't really become outgoing. But I know that when I'm doing theater and when I'm participating in shows and at the camp, I came back and I was a lot more confident, like, with myself. And now I'm able to, like, hold eye contact with people while I'm talking, which I could not do before.
And so, Kennedy, now, we're talking about, we talk about the five Cs and how all our graduates need to have that. And sometimes that, because we offer these courses in fine arts, they're promoting that and just really appreciate it and so happy that you shared your experience. But some others may have some specific questions about some of your theater activities.
So, if you're not thinking about being an actress or anything like that, what do you have in mind?
I want to major in forensic science.
In what?
Forensic science.
Oh, I'd like to do that, too. I always wanted to do that. Well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
You are a senior this year?
I'm a sophomore.
Only a sophomore.
Yes, sir.
Ooh, that was off a few years.
And you plan to continue to take drama?
Yes, ma'am.
Look, I don't have a question for you, but I know these two gentlemen over here, the sponsors. And I just personally want to thank you for providing that opportunity to our students.
We were very excited with the opportunity and could not wait. And I kept saying, when are we going to announce the winner? When are we going to announce the winner? Because I remember, like, being a student in this situation and quite the honor and experience. And so, we are very, very thankful that a student got to attend the camp.
We'd like to ask Rodney Young and Terry Young to come up at this time. Kennedy has a gift to present to them, and then we'd like to take a photo together.
No, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, my brother and I are both proud products of the Henry County Public Schools. Terry is a graduate of Fieldhouse Collinsville. I'm a graduate of Laurel Park many decades ago, when it was a high school. I was there at the same time Mr. Grably was there. I'm on the Board of Trustees at the American Shakespeare Center, which is one of the foremost arts, theater arts companies in the world, really, and certainly in the United States. It's a wonderful treasure to have in Virginia. I urge all of you to come visit. If you come visit, let me know. I'll show you around. We're hopeful that we'll be able to do this for many years to come. We can't promise that we'll be able to do it every year. It's an incredible opportunity for a young person, I think. It's three weeks training with world-class artists, actors, directors, academics. And I'm very pleased we were able to do it. I'm extremely pleased that it was a great experience for Kennedy, and I hope we'll be able to do it again. We both are very grateful to you, to having invited us here tonight, and it's good to see everyone again. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And our final presentation this evening is to recognize our board members. So, I'd like to ask Ms. Strayer if she'll come and help me with certificates. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association offers a wide variety of learning opportunities, legislative interaction opportunities, and so on for board members and staff. And we have several who have earned recognition this year. The first category is the Award of Recognition. These members earned fifteen credits in one year, and they are Mrs. Flanagan, Dr. Stanbuck. And I'm going to ask you all to remain so that we take one group picture at the end. The Award of Achievement goes to those who earn twenty-four credits in a year. And our member who achieved that this year was Mr. Grably. The Award of Excellence is given to those who earn forty-eight credits over the course of two years. And we have two board members who achieved that this year, Mr. Zayer and Dr. DeValle. And last, but absolutely not least, the Award of Distinction is given to members who earn eighty-four credits over the course of two years. And as you know, in addition to earning this award, Mr. Martin serves our region as a representative as well. So, we appreciate that. I would like to ask you to go on the stage so that we can get a very nice group picture. I would also like to point out that Mrs. Strayer earned an award this year, but we elected to have her present your awards, and so her award is in her office. But if you all will please stand and show your certificate so that we can take you right there. We are very grateful for the engagement that you all exhibit each year with the stake for us.
All right, next, we have Information Agenda. Mr. Mentor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to point out, every time I come up here, people leave. So, I apologize for that in advance, but I do have some really exciting news to share with you today. I'm here for the assessment update for 2019. Let me get my little clicker here. So, based on the official state accreditation report from the Virginia Department of Education, fourteen schools are accredited. That's all of our schools in Henry County. So, that is a proud accomplishment for our students and our staff and administration for the hard work they put in.
Yes.
As you know, that in seventeen, eighteen school year, the State Department made changes to accreditation, so I'm going to briefly show those and then talk about where we are as a school division. The state level went to a Level One, Two, and Three, and those are the standards in which our students must meet. So, green meaning they met all of them, or Level One. Yellow meaning near standard, they nearly met their standards or they're making significant improvement. And then Level Red is that we are below standard. Standards of accreditation at the elementary school and middle school are judged on these categories, whereas at the high school, they're judged on additional categories, including the one that is coming up in 21, 22, which is college, career, and civic readiness. The state looks at overall achievement in English, math, and science, and they also look at the gap groups that are inside of English and math, with overall achievement in science being the only one they look at. At the high school level, they look at dropout rate, graduation completion, and in all schools, they look at chronic absenteeism. Of course, like I said before, all fourteen of our schools are accredited. We have no schools that are accredited with conditions, and we have no schools that are accredited denied. The benchmarks are as follows: seventy-five in English, and that includes the gap areas; seventy in math, including the gap areas; seventy in science; zero to fifteen percent in absenteeism; eighty-eight percent as far as graduation completion index; zero to six percent as a dropout rate. And in the future, 2021, we'll be looking to get eighty-five percent college, career, and civic readiness. All of our elementary schools are accredited, and all of our secondary schools are accredited. And that's, like I said, a huge accomplishment for our school division and the staffs that were involved. When looking at our pass rates over the past three years, you can see that Henry County has stayed stable in English. you can see that Henry County has stayed stable in English. We had a rise last year in math of 5%. We stayed the same at 79% with science. And we've had a small decrease in social studies over the past few years. When you compare us to the state, Henry County is at 75% in English, and the state is at 78%. Math, we're at 82%, the state is at 82%. Science, we're at 79%, and the state is at 81%. And in social studies, we are at 74%, and the state is at 80%. When looking at on-time graduation, we have had a steady increase of our students that are graduating on time, starting off three years ago with 87% graduation on-time rate to now at 90%. And we're just right behind the state at 91%. So in summary, our division is 100% accredited. We're making strides to close the achievement gaps in those English and math areas. And we've seen experienced growth in all schools. We do know that we have some areas for opportunity, like we do always, and we're going to continue to work on those. These are in reading, writing, and math, as well as continuing to raise our on-time graduation and continuing to look at attendance and how we can improve student attendance overall. And I will be diving deeper in a work session with you in the upcoming month. So do you have any questions?
So the attendance rate was not a part this year?
It is a part this year, yes, sir.
For this year, but not for last year?
Correct, yes, sir.
And you mentioned we're taking steps to deal with that. If that had been a part, would we have met that?
Yes, sir, it's a part. We would have met it. We met it at all of our schools. You have to be red at 25% attendance or absentee rate. We have no schools that are anywhere near 25% absenteeism.
That was my question, the benchmark for absenteeism. 25% is the benchmark for absenteeism?
25 is red, green is 15, so 16 to 24 is yellow. So when you're looking at the three levels of accreditation, when they look at absenteeism, if you're 0 to 15% absenteeism across the school, you're green. If you're 16 to 24, you're yellow, and if you're 25 or above, you're red.
So we want to make sure we stay on the 15%.
Exactly, yes, absolutely. And I will say, a lot of our schools did really well and actually lowered their absenteeism rate. So some went from 8% to 5%. Some went from 16 to 13 or 12%. So they did really good last year at making home visits, talking to students early on, and making it a priority.
I know the graduation rate and dropout rate are different statistics. The dropout rate is the people who leave during a year. Graduation rate is those who complete the program in four years.
So it's two different numbers, exactly like you said. So they looked at a cohort and the number of students that were in the beginning cohort and where they completed in that four years. So, yes.
And you get points. So if someone is supposed to finish in four years and they finish in five, you would get so many points for those students, as well as a student who finishes with a GED or finishes by an alternative method, you still get points, just not the full point that you would get for students in the cohort.
Correct.
So we still want students to try to make it even if they have to have that extra year of support.
And what was our on-time graduation rate?
That will come out Monday.
Oh, okay, I'm premature on that. Okay.
The state issued a notice that it would come out Monday.
Okay.
So what is, I know you mentioned social studies. We're struggling there. Anything in particular that...
So we have been working on it, and there's been a lot of professional development with those departments. And the curriculum team has worked hard with the new staff that we've had come in. But there's been a lot of turnover in that area over the last five years. So there are some new people that the staff is working with and make sure they have the tools that they need to be successful. It's still a priority.
So I know more social studies was...
Right.
...a given, you know? So now we...
But as Mr. Mentor is going to present some of those details of what we're doing in those areas to improve, we know this presentation has usually been really long, so we decided to break it into two, one with just the facts, and the next month to talk about specific details of what we're going to do in those areas to see improvement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mentor.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have the Consent Agenda. Any questions?
A move for approval as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. DeVall, seconded by Mrs. Flanagan, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Action Agenda, we have Mrs. Milner leading off.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Henry County Public Schools annually provides a student planner for students in grades K through 12. The student planners assist students with organization skills in addition to providing supplemental instructional resources. These also included in the student planner are the school policies and procedures, as well as offering communication between the student, the teacher, and the parent. It is recommended that the board approve multiple vendors for student planners according to RFP number 19-04093-A215, and that the division be authorized to exercise subsequent renewals in accordance with the terms of the contract. The planners will be purchased for the 2021 school year. The vendors noted are Global Datebooks and Premier School Specialty. The fiscal impact is approximately $26,000 out of the fiscal year 2020 local instructional funds.
Any questions for Mrs. Milner?
Do this every year, right?
Yes, sir. It's just time for us to...
And every student from grade 1 through 12?
Yes, sir, kindergarten to 12th.
How many do we purchase?
7,000 and...
A little bit, almost a close date, yes.
Yeah, it's like a little, because they sometimes lose them and have to get another one or two kids transfer in and out. And they use them for different purposes. Elementary uses them as communication with the parents, notes back and forth about the day's progress or the week's progress, homework assignments. High school, middle school use them as a planner to teach kids how to keep up with things and as a hall pass. There's also resources within them.
Yes.
So do we have a unit price, like a per planner price?
We normally spend around $23,000, between $23,000 and $24,000. We, not knowing if there will be an increase, and that's the reason why we estimate it, approximately $26,000. I did not bring the individual student planner costs with me today, but I can provide that information for you.
I'm just curious. It always just seems like we don't, you know, when we purchase these big bulk things, we always think, school boards and school divisions, when you purchase thousands and thousands of these, get a fairly good deal, and I'm never convinced that the unit price, whether it's for a computer or for a planner or anything, actually is. Does anyone, do you wonders if divisions are somewhat taken advantage of?
Are they generic, or are they separate, school to school to school? They all look alike?
Well, they have some resources in them that are similar, but each school is able to personalize theirs for their building.
Like the car rider line or the...
Their policies and procedures for them.
Everybody's entrance and exits are different, so they personalize them that way. Personalize them with a cover, principal message.
I remember when individual schools had to buy those if they wanted them.
Do we, we give them, we give each student one, but after that, do we still charge a fee if they lose it and want another one? Did we do that at one point?
Yes, we did do that.
You know, yeah.
Far as I'm, I haven't heard any feedback from our schools as far as them having a shortage and me needing to order additional ones. I know that previously we did charge the students for additional one.
Yeah, we gave them one, but then if you...
Unless it was an extenuating circumstance, then we just gave it to them.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Stanbaugh, seconded by Mr. Martin, to approve the planners. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Next, we have Mrs. Atkins.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. With approval from the school board, the school division will again allow employees to purchase iPads and laptop computers through an interest-free payroll deduction plan. The program will give employees an opportunity to purchase computers and other technological hardware at the negotiated rates from vendors currently under contract with the school division. Employees will be offered six items for purchase. Employees who choose to participate will have the option of monthly payments deducted from their paycheck for six months, beginning January 2020. And here you see a list of all the items and the prices that will be charged by the vendors. It is recommended that the school board approve the employee purchase through payroll deduction. With this approval, we are asking to issue purchase orders based on orders received. There is no fiscal impact for the district.
Are more and more employees using this benefit?
Yes, sir. We also offer it to Tim Hall in the county, and Martinsville City participates with us also.
No fiscal impact.
Curtis Milner's favorite words.
It is a lot of work on this, at the technology department, and I think payroll, but it's worth the work, they say.
We usually have a huge participation.
Which one of these is this? Or is this one of these?
Actually, they no longer sell this. This is an 11-inch, so the one that's most like that is the 13, Apple MacBook Air 13-inch.
She's got a bigger one than we do.
She's got the big one.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Stanbaugh, seconded by Mr. Martin, to approve. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous.
And when does the orders have to begin?
October 25th.
October 25th.
And we'll send that out to March.
All right, next we've got Mr. Kea Scott with some good news.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Unfortunately, I do have a fiscal impact to share with you. Bids were solicited to provide and install an elevator at Fieldhouse Collinsville Middle School. The elevator will provide access to the second floor for students, staff, and visitors that have a difficulty using the steps. This elevator was noted on our feasibility study and is also another step closer in helping us meet our ADA compliance for that building. Of the two firms responding, Frith Construction Company of Ridgeway, Virginia, provided the lowest bid of $309,000, and we've attached the bid summary for your review. And so it's recommended that we award this bid to Frith Construction Company of Ridgeway in the amount of $309,000. Two important notes I'd like to share on the side wise is that this project's going to take a while because the elevator companies have about a 20-week lead time in order to get elevators to, and that's pretty much all standard elevators. And then the other good part of it is we're well below budget than what we had expected. So that was good news.
All right, questions for Mr. Scott?
Where are they? Where will this be placed?
Yeah, great question. The beauty part about this, too, is where the installation's going to take place that won't interrupt instruction time. So they can do this while the school's going on during this year. But if you're familiar with Fieldhouse Collinsville Middle School, we're going to go out the back exit right before you get to the dining areas. There's a breezeway that carries you from the lower end to the upper side. It's going to be right on that corner outside. So basically, we're going to take the upstairs and downstairs access doors and move them out, create a foyer, if you will, and attach that elevator on the side of that breezeway. So it'll be nice, it'll be all inside, and it'll be outside the building where the construction taking place.
Is that a, what's the capacity of this elevator?
I think most of ours are like three persons, and I can't remember the weight limit on it, so...
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Stanbaugh, seconded by Mr. Martin, to approve the elevator at FC. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we've got the superintendents' reports.
Yes, sir. So in the reports, as always, we have our video to begin with, and I'll let the superintendents play that first.
This month highlights future events around the district during the month of September. In the area of high-quality instruction, students in Mrs. Bocoff's kindergarten class at Dury Mason use collaboration and sequencing and working together to make bust cookies. This practice is part of the kindergarten curriculum and starts with a hands-on activity to help students understand working together and following directions and how that is important in each of our daily lives. At George Washington Harbor, 4th grade students in the library club completed their first breakout box activity with nine minutes and five seconds to spare. Primary students at MetaView are using a new app called Novel Effect during library instruction. The app integrates technology into learning by providing students the opportunity to have an interactive experience with stories. Sample Elementary held a Charlotte Web Seam to Reading Night this month. The book was given to all students at the end of the school year last year so they would read it as a family over the summer. There were stations using Google Glasses where students toured a virtual farm. Infancy Acres was available to share animals with students, and Everyone Made Charlotte at the STEAM Station. Hot Dogs and a Wonderful Night with Families was enjoyed by all. Students in Mrs. Davis' 7th grade English class at Laurel Park recently built towers out of 10 sheets of paper and 24 inches of tape, strong enough to hold as many books as possible without falling over. After building the book towers, students were asked to write reflectively as part of the Lucy Galkins Writing Unit. At Assett High School, an encaustic workshop was held with armed students through the Paint Fun Arts Association. Encaustic art includes mixing pigments with wax to inlay color, and students used this method in a variety of ways during the workshop. In the area of high-quality professionals, a discovery education team visited FC Middle on September 18th to promote the benefits of using STEM in all classrooms. They modeled classroom activities with faculty members during which teachers were encouraged to build a mechanism with items, including rubber bands, popsicle sticks, and tape that would transport a stack of plastic cups. The activity focused on the four Cs in solving real-world problems. In the area of safe and innovative learning environments, kindergarten students at Assett recently completed a community helpers unit. The unit was finished by allowing the students to dress as community helpers and having a police officer and fireman come in and speak with the students. At Manistah High School, Google goggles were used for virtual trips in Mr. Schaller's class as students explored the nervous system. In the area of family and community engagement, representatives from New College Institute read to Campbell Court Elementary's kindergarten classes this month. Students were treated to a wonderful story and had opportunities to discuss the book with the reader. Each child also received a book of their very own. Bingo and Snacks were a huge hit during grandparents' night at Mount Olivet Elementary School in September. On Friday, September 6th, students from Ms. Kalinsky's agriculture class at FC Middle School visited Stanleytown Elementary. The ag students read books related to agriculture to the preschool through 3rd grade classes. Ag students introduced students at the elementary school to agriculture and hopefully sparked future interest in the program. Students at Career Academy and Industrial Maintenance classes spent time delivering pumpkin projects to local sponsors. Students practiced fabricating and torch skills with cutting dynamic shapes such as jack-o'-lanterns. Seniors and juniors from across the division enjoyed college night at Manistah High School while meeting with representatives from a variety of colleges around the region recently. We are excited to support these students as they move towards their future. As always, our students and staff continue to be inspired.
Any questions on this for the superintendent? All right, we have matters presented by the board. We will start with Dr. DeVall.
I don't have a matter to present, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mrs. Flanagan.
I want to congratulate again all of our staff for the SOL achievement. That is quite an achievement that we've been working towards for a long, long time. I've been here for 16 years, and that was one of the first things that we've been talking about. So congratulations. And I wanted to thank Ms. Milner for helping me and any of the sponsors that may be here. And I wanted to thank Ms. Milner for helping me, and any of the sponsors that may be here, I don't think I see any, for the Beta Club at FC and Laurel Park, the FFA at Magnavista, and a group from Facet that helped me on the Spencer Fair Weekend. They worked really, really hard, and I was very proud of them. And it's the first year that I've really ever had enough people to actually help me, so I appreciated it very much, and they were very well behaved and did everything that I asked them to do, so I was very proud of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Flanagan. Dr. Stombach. Mr. Martin.
I'll just echo Mrs. Flanagan's comments and congratulate our staff and for the great achievement and all the work that has gone into that for many years, so can't be said enough.
And I know Mr. Gravy doesn't have anything to say, but I'll give him the chance anyway.
Actually, you got three hours. No, just want to acknowledge the new camera system that we purchased for our schools. I've visited several schools, and, I mean, picture clear. I mean, and talking with the ladies and some of the building principals, they really love what we've done with the upgrades with the cameras. I guess the only thing, some of the old cameras, well, the old system, making sure that they sync. I know we had a couple glitches there, but the pictures, perfect, perfect. Mr. Scott? And Mrs. Scott, I guess. Thanks. Unless you want to respond.
I'll do that, too. I have to share a little bit about it. It's been an ongoing process, a lot of teamwork obviously involved in that, and one of the, I think, the greatest part is the relationship piece with the principals, because we spend time with the principals walking the buildings and marking areas that we need additional coverage. The good side is, you had mentioned, some of the older cameras, the old analog box cameras, still communicate with those DVRs, and those DVRs and the work with the technology department has helped us a lot, because now those DVRs are on our network where we can access that in different areas. Principals can access it from their telephones, and we're continuing to grow with that. So we've got a lot more work to do, but it's heading in the right direction, so thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Okay, I'm not going to go over all the meetings and dates and events. We got a conference coming up in November, and our regular meeting is November the...
Seventh.
November the seventh.
December change.
And that's exactly right. We're going to have to change our December meeting, and I think we probably need a motion to do that, I would think. Go ahead and explain that, superintendent.
Every year, and it's my fault that I did not see this, but I remember that every year, the VASCD conference that most of our staff will be at that attend these meetings, that takes place in Williamsburg, and is always that first few days of December, and we typically move the December meeting if it's a conflict, so we would need to move our December meeting to December 12th at 6:00 PM.
Need a motion to go from December the 5th to December the 12th, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Flanagan, seconded by Mr. Martin, to change our regular December meeting to December the 12th. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, we need a motion to go in the closed session on the code 2.2-3711A1, A2, and A7, please.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Flanagan, seconded by Dr. DeValt, to go in the closed session under those three sections of the code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, and we will adjourn from upstairs. Thank you.